Good evening. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Tonight, today is March 21st, 2023. Our thought for today is what you do has far greater impact than what you say. That's Stephen Covey. Steven Covey, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this board to order tonight. Tonight, we have a special guest here with us tonight. He's the pastor of the St. Paul AME Church, Dr. Logan. Sir, if you would, please come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. If you would, tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about your ministry and pray for our community, please.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you Chairman Baines and to all of the commissioners and esteemed assemblage of leaders and those who provide real-time effect and impact in our community. I think the statement you made earlier was so appropriate to kind of dumb-break what I would say. On behalf of the St. Paul AME Church family, one of the historic community partners in this area of the vineyard of leadership that is provide real historic and contemporary impact. Our theme is developing, following a godly vision by creating and maintaining strategic community impact with strategic partners. And many of you already are such. And so, we appreciate the opportunity to continue to discern what that vision means and how what we do makes a difference beyond who we are and what we see in the current moment, recognizing that it's bigger than us and it's not about us. I think the last time many of you and I were together, we were at a park, some kind of a facility for children. And in essence, that's really what it's all about. It takes me to the text of Simon Sinek in his book, "Starting with Why," remembering why we do what we do and who we do this for. When we remember why, we recognize that the end result is what we are ultimately connected to. The what and the who is directly related to the why. It helps us to navigate the labyrinth of challenges that we face with respect to interpersonal connections and challenges that we might have and the ways that life doesn't always happen the way we want it to. But if we're resilient enough and we're committed enough and we recognize again why we're doing what we do, we get to where we need to get to together. The ultimate thing we have to do is maintain respect and dignity of all of our partners. And remember, as I think over the last 24 hours, there's been a tragedy that we've all been made aware of, family. It was below freezing last night and a lot of our citizens are outdoors. And yet, on the other side of it, today, one of the young people in our church, Kiana James, was selected as valedictorian for a class in Eastern High. And so, the polemic is there. And the why of it is that we have to deal with all of it. As the classic Clint Eastwood movie would call it, "The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly." And we have to be prepared to address all of it. And so, our prayer is, oh God, help us to continue to recognize why we do what we do, who we do it for, and the fact that we don't do this alone. You've given us the capacity. You've given us the tools, the talent, the ability. Everything that we've gone through before this very moment has prepared us for this moment. And we only have now. Help us to embrace now, whatever we haven't done in the past. Help us to move beyond that. And whatever we need to do right now to make the future better, help us to be brave and bold enough, respectful and humble, and hard-working enough to make it happen. Here are our prayers. We ask it in Jesus' name. And all of God's people said, "Amen."
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Pastor, we greatly appreciate. I got a small token of appreciation for you. We greatly appreciate all that you do in this community. And thank you for what you are doing, you and St. Paul. You and St. Paul, the things that y'all are doing together to improve the community. We thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we do have with us tonight our chief judge and is with us tonight, Mr. Judge Ken Nguyen. Judge, if you don't mind, would you please lead us in our, would you come up and lead us in our pledge tonight, please, sir?
I'll be happy.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, sir. Before we adopt the agenda, we do have some changes tonight. First change, we need to remove E, A-E, under the consent agenda. We need to remove E. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, C, C, I'm sorry. We need to remove C. And we need to add. We need to add E under consent agenda. There's appointment, Mr. Vincent Jerome Kelly to the Splot Committee, District Two. We also need to add 17A. 17A. Which is a request for a budget transfer from. From Finance and Superior Court. That'll be done by Ms. Brittany White, 17A. And 18.
Mr. Chair, number 18 will be a discussion regarding a proposed exchange of real property with Gaither's Church. And this was tabled from December 6th, 2022.
With those changes, I seek a motion of approval, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request you add two items to the agenda. I sent the email out in regards to a discussion for Fairview Community Park. Since the two tragic incidents we've had, I would like for us to discuss to see what parameters we will put in place for that county park. That's item number one I would like to add. And also, from the Splot meeting last night, I was informed by some of the individuals that attended that there was some information provided in regards to the Westside Youth Facility. And since our project manager is here, maybe we can get some updates on where we are because I'm getting questions and asked throughout the community, what is happening with the Westside Youth Facility? And we have not been provided any information. So my motion, number one, is to add Fairview Community Park discussion, to discuss parameters on how we're gonna move as a county to keep that park safe and our residents in the area safe.
We're gonna make, we're gonna make it 19. Discussion on Fairview Community Park.
And then, Mr. Chairman, my other motion is to add the Westside Youth Facility discussion since we have our project manager here to update us. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, there were information that was provided at the meeting, the Splot meeting last night that I wasn't privy to. So I wanted to find out what the information was and I would like to know where we are because there has not been a discussion in the residents in the area, especially since we've had that incident Monday with the fire in Fairview Community Park and also the massive shooting in Fairview Community Park. People are constantly asking. I was brought a community meeting on last Friday where they asked me information and I could not provide that to them because I had nothing to provide. The information was provided to Splot Committee last night.
The only thing is, is I'm not aware of any new information about the Westside.
Well, if we can place it on the agenda as a discussion, we have our project manager because he stated some information last night. So I would like to know exactly where we are because we've been sitting on a project that should have started by now. This is from the 2017 Splot. So we have to discuss it. We can't just leave it dormant. We have to talk about it. And that's old to the residents in the county who utilize their tax dollars to say they want this facility. So we have to talk about it. I don't know why we can't talk about it.
Well, we need to know exactly what kind of information was put out.
And that's what I would like to ask the project manager since he's here. We cannot, we can't meet formally without a public meeting.
Before we put it on the floor of the board, though.
Well, we can't meet formally, Mr. Chairman, without a public meeting. So since we have our project manager here, and I know he's invoiced by the county by his time, he's here, so let's utilize that versus using taxpayers' dollars to pay for him to appear.
Well, what we'll do, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll give him the floor. He put on the next agenda, but he need to give an update to legal counsel, to me. I don't know anything about any new.
Can we just make, I made an informal motion. If the board want to vote it down, not to discuss the Westside Youth Facility, that's fine. My motion is to place the Westside Youth Facility on the agenda. This is my second time asking. I asked the last meeting, I asked the last past meetings and it has been voted down. So we have not been provided any information in the past two meetings. That's a problem, Mr. Chairman.
So I'll tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add it. That's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna add it so we can discuss it. We'll find out. With those changes, guys, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes 5-0, thanks. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Citizens' comments about agenda topics only. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Name is Travis Thomas, but I'm gonna read this on the behalf of my wife, Ivory Coburn. You need address also?
Yes, please.
Okay. 15 Blanket Pass, I stay in Silver Ridge Estates. All right. My name is Ivory Coburn, reside in District Three. I came to discuss the concerns that I have for my district. The first concern is that I noticed that the Westside Facility is not on the agenda. However, it was discussed in a previous town hall meeting that Commissioner Sanders will be able to add or include it into the upcoming agenda. As a resident and taxpayer, I am saddened and disappointed that my vote for the facility has not been agreed or started. I have three children whom have and are attending school in this county. Sadly, they have not been able to enjoy their district due to the lack of resources for them. I am aware that the seller, which was stated that he or she pulled their offer, is still on the table. As an educator in the community, I have several parents inquire, several parents inquire about the nearest facility for their children. Unfortunately, we do not have one that is within our district. I am demanding that we begin the process for the facility so our children can have somewhere to go. The next concern I have is the construction for the roadway for Jack Neely and Brown Bridge. I am aware that the construction for Jack Neely and Kirkland Road will begin. However, the intersection between Jack Neely and Brown Bridge will increase in traffic and as well as accidents. I have seen several accidents occur during morning traffic. Will there be a light or a roundabout in that area to prevent traffic buildup? My last concern, we will have sidewalks. I have noticed during my drive, there are people, including children, who are walking partially on the road to their destination. In addition, I have noticed children riding their bikes in areas that are considered a blind spot for drivers that are risking their lives riding in that area.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda topics only, please. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. I just, before I start speaking, I want to make sure that Fairview Community Park was added to the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay. As I said, good evening. My name is Sharon Collins from Fairview Estates. I am standing before you to express my concerns about the recent activity in the community. Fairview conducted its yearly homeowners meeting last night. And one item on the agenda we addressed was the park. There were some of us who wanted to see one thing happen and there were others who wanted to see something else. Because we still have a democracy, we were able to come to a consensus in 45 minutes. Although it was not what I wanted to happen in the park, we were able to make decisions that would come, we were able to make a decision that will benefit all of us and we can live with it. Our requests will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners at a later date. Thank you so much and I'm glad democracy works.
Thank you. Anyone else? Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. We have the YMCA with us here tonight. Ms. Lucy Hay, if you would, please. Lulie, Lulie, Lulie Hay, if you would, please come on. No, that's your mom. If you would, please come on up, please. Thank you, ma'am, for being here tonight.
I appreciate being invited.
Yes, ma'am.
Honored to be here. Thank you all for having us, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and spotlight a little bit of the work of the Y for you. The YMCA has been in this community since the early 80s. You may know that it started in the little Rotary Building across from the Board of Education and then grew, our facility grew in 2000 with funds raised in this community. And then, in 2007, we were given 28 acres off of Stone Road to develop our outdoor center. And at the time that we were raising money for that facility, we used the tagline, "Be a part of something good." And tonight, I just wanted to share with you so much of the good that the Y is doing in this community. Through our connections in this community, with our donors, our members, our volunteers and participants, and our financial assistance recipients, we're all connected to the greater good for this community. You may know that the Y never turns anyone away due to an inability to pay. We raise money every year in this community so that we can subsidize our programming. Our current fundraising is up to $180,000. We currently have 6,670 participants and members. Of those, 3,185 are on assistance. Guidance for what the community needs the Y to do to help our community comes from our Volunteer Board of Management, a group of 22 people who believe in this community and believe in the work of the Y. I've got three of our board members here this evening. Claudia Engelbrot with Omni Machine Works, Thomas Keppart with United Bank, and Ken Malcolm with the City of Covington. And Greg Herring has graduated from our board, so I still count him in the mix. The Y offers after-school care, summer day camp, sports programs, swim lessons, swim team, youth and adult sports, including soccer, basketball, volleyball, disc golf, and kickball, wellness memberships and exercise classes, and top soccer and angel fish swim lessons for children with diverse abilities. During COVID, the Y worked with Newton County Schools to feed lunches to families and neighborhoods that the school system could not reach. We used our three after-school buses to go into neighborhoods every day for eight months, providing 29,255 lunches to families in this community. And this was all food donated by members of this community. We also provided childcare for first responders and medical workers and did welfare checks on seniors during COVID. Many of our current numbers are in the impact report that's in front of you. I know some of you got it in the mail as well, but I wanted to just highlight some of those. I'm especially partial to the story about Lauren Davis that's in the front cover. Lauren is an example of a teen who grew up at the Y and now gives back to the Y by coaching in our soccer program. Lauren is a senior at Eastside High School and she's one of six children in Georgia to have gotten the congressional nomination for all the military academies. Newton County should be proud of Lauren Davis. The Y is one of the largest employers of teens. We have lifeguards, sports referees, summer camp counselors, and childcare workers. We are a part of this community. We fundraise in this community and we are greatly supported by this community. You have in front of you our YMCA Cheerios Challenge is our road race that's coming up in April. Hope you'll come be a part of it. Walk, run, push a stroller, just be there and celebrate good health and the good work of all of you and of this community that is in partnership with General Mills. So I just remind you that we are here to do good in this community and want you all to be a part of it. If you aren't already a part of the Y, I promise there's a place for you and we invite you to be a part of something good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for all the things that you guys are doing over at the Y to help improve the community. And thank you for giving the kids another option. So we greatly appreciate you.
Well, it's our, it's our honor. And I also should have said that I'm a product of Newton County. I grew up in this community and I actually went to kindergarten and middle school in Thicwid on the same block where I work, so I hadn't gotten very far in life. But I'm proud of that and appreciate your having me here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also in the chairman's report. We did, we, you know, we, Ms. Latonya has been filling in for quite some time now for Ms. Lisa, who we know passed away, who we love dearly. We finally got someone to fill her position. Ms. Money Lucky, if you would, just wave your hand, please. Thank you, ma'am. She's the new special project coordinator over at Gaither's. So thank you so much for being here tonight. Next on the agenda. It's the consent agenda. I want to recognize Mr. Kelly tonight. Mr. Kelly, if you, I know I saw you here. If you would, just stand up and be recognized, please, sir. He's the new District Two appointment for the Splot Committee. Thank you for your willingness to serve this community, sir. We greatly appreciate it and we look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. With that being said, commissioners, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed 5-0. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, it is 7:24. Do you want to move forward with number nine?
Yes.
Okay. Items for board discussion and consideration. We are on item number nine. The City of Covington is requesting approval to improve and upgrade the basketball courts at the Washington Street Community Center. There will be no cost to Newton County. The cost is $140,000 and it was approved by the City of Covington City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. I just had no words about Lisa and here you are.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. I'll let you go ahead, sir.
Okay. On behalf of Mayor Steve Horton, who unfortunately had planned to be here tonight, but he's recovering from a medical procedure this afternoon. It's taken a little bit longer than he anticipated. And our community development director, Mr. Ken Malcolm, who is present. We thank you for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight. A lot of people present may wonder why the City of Covington would be looking to improve county properties. And they don't understand the working relationship that the city and the county have had, especially in the Washington Street area. And so, I want to take just a couple of minutes to brief people. When the real estate market crashed in 2008, the Walkers Bend subdivision there in that area was in its infancy. The city bought all of the lots from the banks that foreclosed on the subdivision to prevent blight from moving into that area. We bought those lots and after we did that, the city and the county and the Covington Housing Authority teamed together to build the new youth center there in Walkers Bend. The city acquired a grant from the Department of Community Affairs and we were grateful that the county put in their NSP funds that they had. And then, the Housing Authority went and borrowed the remaining funds for that center. We later transferred all the lots to the Housing Authority and they have been maintaining that and preventing the blight to continue. The city's parks and trails will, from Central Park, the trail coming from Central Park will come through a couple of blocks away from the Washington Street Center. So there's a lot going on there. The city has also just approved, making application to the Department of Community Affairs for a $1 million housing improvement grant for that, for that area. And that brings us to the Washington Street Center, which if anyone has not been by and visited the work that the county has done, I would recommend anyone in the audience that has not seen that, it's been well-done and it's, it's a very nice facility. But as we look at the facility, the city is wanting to help put the cherry on top of the cake, so to speak. The community pride is very important anytime you go to try to revitalize an area and improve an area. And community pride, we would like to improve the, remodel the basketball courts there to instill some, to show some pride in the community and give the community something that they can take possession of and take pride in. Our proposal is to take up the existing asphalt there. Our concrete contractor will go in and put down a base. We will issue an RFP for surfacing. This would be a synthetic-type surfacing that would hold the Washington Street logo in the, at half court. This court would be a high school regulation court with new goals, new fencing. And the city will provide all the funds. The design and the final approval for the layout of the improvements would be closely coordinated with the Newton County Recreation Department. Dwayne and I have worked together for probably better than 30 years and so we have a good working relationship. and so we have a good working relationship. And Ms. Bee is very excited about participating in that. And so the county departments would have the final say-so in the design. When the project is completed, the city would not have any authority or any say. We will finish the project, and we will walk away. Will not be any, there will not be any commitment or anything owed to the city. We plan to use proceeds from our hotel motel tax, which we can use for this project. And what we're doing is we're asking the county for an official approval for us to move forward with the project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, can I get a, can I, Commissioner Henderson?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Connor. I want to say something before I make this motion to approve, is that Ms. Lisa will have an everlasting memory of doing a lot of great things in Newton County. Because I remember, and I loved her, and I thank God that he had given me the opportunity to kind of just be around her. And she did some mercy for Nelson Heights, Washington Street, too, as well. And I would hope that at some point we could do something just for her memory, because she came over to Nelson Heights, and she brought all the chairs, and she did a whole lot of work over there, and she did it because she loved Newton County.
She did, Commissioner Henderson, and I appreciate you saying so. Thank you, sir.
Yes, she did. And I'm hoping that we can do something in her memory. I'd like to make a motion to approve what Mr. Connor has suggested for Washington Street Basketball Court.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion?
I'd just like to add something, if I may. I had the opportunity to look at the plan that we had talked about that would connect Nelson Heights, Washington Street, and I think of a little bridge. And, you know, and I'm hoping that we can continue to work to connect these parks together for the benefit of the community, so that they will not have to ride all around town, and they can walk from one destination to another destination.
That's our goal, Commissioner Henderson, because it is dangerous to walk through some of these roads and streets. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All in favor? It passes five oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. Next, it is actually seven thirty-three. We're running just a little behind for zoning tonight. Ms. Shayna, Applewhite, if you would, please, come on up.
Good evening, and thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
Our first petition for this evening is a future land use map amendment. The case number is FLU twenty-three dash zero 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 one. The existing land use map is residential and PRC, which is Parks, Recreation, and Conservation. And the proposed land use map for just two point one zero acres is commercial, and it would be this little area in the front here. With just two point one zero acres that they're requesting out of the thirty-four acres. Right, the watershed is the South River. It's located at sixty-five eighty, Highway two twelve. The tax ID number or the map and parcel number is one two six dash one five. And the total acreage is thirty-four point four one, and we're amending the flume for just two point one zero acres to commercial. Owner is Michael M. Allen. He's also our petitioner today. And this is the aerial of the parcel, thirty-four acres, and he's requesting to amend the flume for just this section in front here, which is about two point one zero acres. An applicant's intent is to amend that land use for that small area to commercial in order to seek a rezoning for the property for neighborhood commercial use. It's a barber shop. So if you see here, the entire parcel has, it has two map amendments. It's PRC is where the stream is running, and then the yellow area is residential. And at the planning commission, we actually had the flume amendment to go to commercial slash PRC. But I'm going to request to make a small amendment. We're just going to actually do the front here to just the commercial. And the PRC and the residential will be left on the remainder of the parcel. So that's only update from the planning commission. This is the current zoning of the map. It's currently zoned agricultural, residential. And we have some other commercial zonings at the junction here and over this junction as well. Yeah, it's in the South River watershed. This is a survey that was presented. This is the approximate area that is requesting for the flume amendment to be. And again, it is located in the Oak Hill character area, and the suitable land uses according to this character area are agricultural, residential, office, commercial, office institutional, parks, rec, and conservation. So he's requesting to go to the commercial one. And in conclusion, the two point one zero acres is currently undeveloped. It's part of the parent parcel of thirty-four point four one acres. And pursuant to the Oak Hill character areas, appropriate land uses, commercial is an appropriate land use request. And should the board decide to approve this petition, staff is of the opinion that a future land use amendment may be appropriate for the area. And again, this is a map amendment, so no recommendations are made at this time. However, should the board approve it, it will come back before you again with the rezoning, at which time recommendations can be added. And I do believe the applicant is here, and if there are any questions for staff.
Thank you.
And this is in District Two.
Thank you. We're going to open it up at this time for our public hearing for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Maurice Allen, Jr. My address is Seventy Patterson Way, Covington, Georgia. So just like Shayna explained, I like to take two acres of my thirty-four acres and rezone that so that I can put my barber shop in that place. My current barber shop is Portidale, the James Grooming Lounge in Portidale. So my intention is not only to bring a high-quality grooming service to an area in which I reside, but also to provide retail and other service establishments in which serve the daily needs of the residential neighborhoods. Like Shayna said, it's, the total building is four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet. My barber shop would just encompass twelve hundred square feet of that. I appreciate the ten minutes, but I don't think I'm going to need the whole ten minutes. That's basically all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Would anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Also, I'll ask Applewhite, if you would. I think this is District Two, Commissioner Mason. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I make my motion, I do want to say that I did have an extensive conversation with Mr. Allen in regards to this particular project. I got an opportunity to tour all of this land that he has. I can see that he has definitely maintained it very, very well thus far. I think this will be a great additive to our community. And of course, you know, being the district with the highest population currently and a lot of youth, a lot of individuals that will be able to take advantage of this particular project. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve FLU two-three dash zero 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 one.
Can I get a second, please? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our second petition this evening is also a future land use map amendment. It's FLU twenty-three dash zero 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 two. The existing land use map is AF, Agricultural Forestry, and they are proposing to go to rural residential. The existing zoning is A, agricultural. It is located in the Bear Creek watershed, and it is on Popular Hill Road. The map and parcel number is zero one one eight zero four zero C. The total acreage is twenty point nine nine, and they are asking to amend the flume for the entire lot. And the owner is listed as Jerry and Hilda C. Prosser, Newton, Stephen, and Carol Newton, and Beagers. And our petitioner today is Mr. Charles Wiggins. I'm sorry, this is the actual aerial of the parcel here. So the applicant's intent is to designate the future land use of the twenty point nine nine acres to rural residential in order to seek a rezoning of the property for a family estate residential use. So the family currently owns this area here, and they wanted to add this piece to that. And in order to do that, they would like to also subdivide it into smaller lots, and they would need to amend the flume and rezonate to do that. But it will remain as a family estate. This is the current zoning, a zoned residential, rural estate right now, sorry. And this is the parcel at the bottom here they're seeking the flume change for. It's in the Bear Creek watershed. This is the survey that was provided. And again, existing zoning is currently AF. They're requesting to go to RR, which is rural residential. It is located in the Bear Creek watershed, which suitable uses are agricultural, residential, and parks and rec. And in conclusion, if the twenty point nine nine acres is currently undeveloped and pursuant to the Bear Creek character areas, appropriate land uses, rural residential is an appropriate land use request. And should the board decide to approve this petition, staff is of the opinion that the future land use amendment may be appropriate in this area. And once again, this is a map amendment. There are no recommendations attached at this time. However, it will come before you again if approved as a rezoning, at which time recommendations can be made. And applicant is here, or the petitioner, and if there are any questions for staff.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight.
Hi, thank you. Chip Prosser for eighty Poplar Hill Road. I'm one of the family members that currently owns the property. As Masina said, you know, our intent is to ultimately get it rezoned into matching the property that we also own adjacent. We're just, with a recent death in the family, we need to split the property up among the heirs. And to do so, we need to get it rezoned. The intent is to keep it within the family and not really change much that's there, just to be able to split it up and get it amongst the heirs there. But all staying in the family. We've been in the community about five generations now with no intent of leaving, so long-time residence.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. I think this is District One, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make a motion, I'd like to make a comment. I had spoken with applicants, applicant or applicants on a couple of different occasions, and I'm very supportive of what they're trying to accomplish. And if you'll notice, what Mr. Prosser just stated was basically the property is landlocked, and it would have no choice but to be merged in with adjacent, the property they already own, so that adjacent property. So I think it's a very worthwhile change of zoning at this time, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion. We approve future land use amendment FLU two-three zero 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 two.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next petition this evening is a conditional use permit. It is CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 one. It is a proposed special events facility. The existing zoning is A, agricultural, as well as AR, agricultural, residential. It's located in the Yellow River watershed. Location is ninety-two Morse Farm Road, and it's actually one of the buildings on the farm, Little Springs Farm, building number eighty-nine. It's an older house that is there. The parcel size is two thousand five hundred and eighty-six point nine seven acres, and the facility is proposed to occupy just about seven acres approximately. The tax ID number is zero zero six eight dash zero zero six. It's in Commissioner District One. Current owner is listed as Little Springs Farm LLC, care of Core Realty Advisors. Whoever our petitioner is Angela Shockey and representative, and I believe there is someone here who may be on her behalf. The applicant's intent is to convert an existing home, lot number eighty-nine, on the Little Springs Farm into a conference and learning center with meeting and gathering spaces. And again, the subject site is over two thousand acres. It is dual-zoned, A and AR. It's currently being used as residential and farming. And applicant is proposing to use only the seven acres, which is about point zero three percent for a special events facility. In the site plan analysis, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant to the department in January, staff offers the following consideration when it comes to fencing, property development standards, general design standards, and signage. The site plan and the letter of intent indicates it's going to be a special events facility on the property. And they have provided us with the necessary site plans and maps, which we will present next, and only expected to take up seven acres. In your packet, you do have the criteria and the standards for a special events facility, and they were able to meet all of these. And in conclusion, the facility is allowed in the current zoning with this process. And as I said, the lot is over twenty-five hundred acres. They're only proposing to use seven of those acres. And they are going to utilize an existing building, so they're not building something new. They're going to renovate, you know, what is there and convert it into this space. And if the board finds that this use meets the standards as set forth in Section five one zero dash five nine five above or previously for a special events facility, it should be approved in that case. Staff recommends, should the Board of Commissioners approve the conditional use request to allow the special events facility, that approval would be with the following recommended conditions. And the conditions we have stated below. And of course, they should be approved for a conditional use permit for a special use facility, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. And where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions as set tonight shall supersede unless they're specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And the first one is that the current home shall be renovated with proposed additions of a porch and a detached pavilion to accommodate this facility. Two, improvements shall include parking for thirty-five vehicles, outdoor recreational spaces, and driveway. Three, the facility improvements shall not expand outside of the current approximate seven acres designated in the site plan provided to the department. And four, approval and/or permits must be obtained from the following agencies as required. We have environmental health. We have the Newton County Transportation Department, Newton County Fire Marshal's Office, the Newton County Water and Sew Authority, and the GSWCC. So this is the location of the entire parcel, all twenty-five plus hundred acres of the Morse Farm, of the Little Springs Farm, sorry, off of Morse Farm Road. It is dual-zoned. We have the dark green is A, and on this side it's AR. This is the survey that was provided. The area in red outlines the seven acres that they are proposing to use. This is Morse Farm Road across here. And this is a better representation of it. So this up here would be the Morse Farm Road, goes out to the highway out here. And the house is located here that they're planning to renovate. And again, this is a concept plan that was provided. This is the current layout of the home that they're going to renovate, the new pavilion that they're gonna put. Then they've got the landscaping in place and the parking. And then there's more parking where the current hangar is. And again, this is, we're gonna propose the parking where the current hangar is located to accommodate for thirty-five cars. And this driveway, so Morse Farm Road is up here, and then comes down the old airport runway and breaks off to go to the home over here. And this is at the head of Morse Farm Road. They're gonna create a little bit of a roundabout for ingress and egress ease. This is the floor, and concept plan of the proposed floor plan they're looking at. So you've got the meeting spaces. So there are no bedrooms or anything like that here. It's gonna be entirely for day use and for a few times during the year. So you've got the meeting rooms here, and then the smaller rooms they've also converted into spaces. And of course, you've got the outside areas that they're proposing to convert. And this is a elevation concept of what they're planning on doing. And again, just a different angle of the current house that they're planning to renovate. And another angle, this is the proposed pavilion that they're going to build. And if there are any additional questions, and applicant is here, I believe. Yes, the applicant is here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're gonna open it up now for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Paul Ludwig, three seven one five Northside Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm with Cora Realty, and I represent the owner. We represent the owner in many, many of their real estate holdings. On behalf of the owners, which is the Occam Hertz Foundation, we thank you for considering the special use permit, conditional use permit, I'm sorry, I keep calling it that, for a special events facility at the Hertz home on Little Springs Farm. The project honors the legacy of Mr. Hertz, who was a German entrepreneur who started buying commercial real estate in, across the southeast in the nineteen seventies. In the nineteen eighties, he bought Little Springs Farm. He and his wife enjoyed the farm and believed that the freedom that the farm and the country and the county and the community brought to them, he loved it so much that he is currently buried on the farm, not in Germany, overlooking his lakes. And this facility will overlook his plot, I guess, for lack of a better term. Upon his death in two thousand and seven, the Stiftonge or the foundation was formed to promote educational and education of young adults in science, education, economics, natural sciences, and the personal development of young adults and teenagers. They have a program where they bring German young folks, which are interns in the businesses in Germany, over to America, and they work for American businesses for three months. They don't, they won't live on the farm. They'll live in other places, but they'll come to the farm, get oriented to America and learn our ways. And then for about a week, and then go out to the businesses. That's one of the programs they hope to continue as well as others, and to let the facility be available to other nonprofits in the area and the community to be able to utilize at a no cost. Currently, the farm is primarily leased by cattle operator. The foundation quickly got out of the cattle business. When they took over, they found it didn't make any money to give away, so. And then we also have hunting leases on the property that kick in periodically throughout the year. There is no intention to develop the farm in any other location other than in the proposed project area. They loved it as a farm, and we want to keep it as a farm. So the plans include modifying their house, which is about a forty-five hundred square foot, mid-century modern, if you watch the channels on TV, and basically turn it into small meeting rooms and improve the restrooms, improve the facilities, the kitchen, and do outside rooms so that people can meet, talk, learn, both inside and outside the space. Again, there will be no overnight accommodations. This is just for day use. We're gonna add porches, because we always have porches in the South. Another good place for people to talk. We are adding, we like to add an entrance, because Mr. Hertz was a flyer, and he does have a hangar and airplane, though nobody flies it. And sometimes he didn't fly particularly well. He's crashed a couple of times. We're going to, we'd like to use that as our entrance drive and our parking. It's a lot of existing asphalt. There's no sense to make anymore. And so we would like another entrance off of Morse Farm Road for that. There's already a gate there. I think they do it for the cattle business, but we'd like to improve that. And then part of the foundation is to create sustainability and a low-carbon footprint. So this will be, our architect is designing it to be passive, sustainable. We're gonna have solar collectors, both to generate power, but also for education when groups come, so they can learn how to do that. We hope you approve it. They're very excited, and we think it'll bring a benefit to the entire community. At least, we hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight?
Hello, I'm Brian Jones, thirteen seventy-six Piedmont Road in Atlanta, Georgia. I'm from Jones Pierce Architects, and I'm just available if you have any questions about the facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also want to allow ten minutes for anyone if you would like to oppose tonight. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. A comment if I might. Just so everyone is aware, the bulk of this farm will be untouched. I think it's been well documented so far. I spent a great deal of time in my youth on this particular farm, and it's a beautiful place. It's a wonderful asset for our county. Just absolutely breathtaking. I had the honor or privilege about a month or so, I guess, to go out and have a look-see on what the trust plans to do with the building, and the building only save for the driveway movement. And I gotta tell you, the drawings you saw are what I had seen earlier, and it's gonna be a great place. It will not be, and I asked the question, it will not be for commercial use. This will be for, you know, German interns, their orientation, and various activities for those interns, and then other, as was stated, other nonprofits, and maybe even the county gets to use it occasionally, so. If we're lucky. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve conditional use permit CUP two-three dash zero 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 one.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
And I just want to say, Stan, District One Commissioner, hey, that is, I went years back. Those are beautiful pieces of property then. I think now it's even more beautiful.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Ms. Appleweight.
Yes, sir. Our next case this evening is also a conditional use permit. It's CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 two. The proposed use is auto sales for antique and classic cars. It is located in Ninetych Mesa Road on two point two-three acres. The tax ID is zero zero two four zero seven seven E, as in Edward. Future land use, the map is development node. The existing zoning is M one, light industrial, and it is located in the Almond Overlay Tier Two. It is in the Yellow River watershed and in Commissioner District Three. Owner is Greenleaf Investment Partners, Lot Seventy-eight LLC, care of Fellers, Schu, Scott and Roberts. And our petitioner today is John Kale Waddleton. And applicant's intent is to establish the auto sales business for antique or classic cars in this overlay district. And the reason why it's being brought before the board is because it's in the Almond Overlay. And again, it's on to, the subject site is on two point two-three acres, and it's currently one of ten tenant spaces in the building located in the Chumisa Industrial Park off of the access road. And it is in direct vicinity of other commercial and industrial businesses. In the site plan analysis, based on the site plan submitted by the applicant to Development Services in January, staff offers the following considerations when considering fencing, property development standards, general design standards and signage. And they're proposing to use Suite Ninety for the auto sale center. They plan to have no more than five cars at a time within the building on display. All cars will be parked indoors. And should the petition be approved, the applicant must obtain all required permits and licenses and everything. And in conclusion, should the petition meet the standards of Division four fifty, Almond Overlay, of the two thousand and nine Newton County zoning ordinance, it may be appropriate at this location. And staff recommends that, should the Board of Commissioners approve the conditional use request, the loaded approval be with recommended conditions listed below. On the next slide. And should the board approve, if it should be approved for a conditional use permit based on the subject owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. And where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions, they shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by this board. And to the owner's agreement, one, to abide by the following development standards and regulations. So first, he must submit a site plan of the location, obtain any required permits. Two, obtain and maintain a business license. Three, all activities for the auto sales shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building. And four, no outside storage is allowed on the property, and no merchandise allowed to be displayed outside of the building. So this is the location of the areas in the Chumisa Business Park, and he is in this building here. Of course, it's zoned M one, light industrial. There's a gray area, and it's industrial on both sides of this park as well. And they have a little bit of commercial. I think this is a church up here. This is the survey that was submitted. So he's this building at the bottom here, and they're at the end unit. Suite Ninety. And it's off of Chumisa Road, which goes out to the access road. And this is an example from applicant's photos of the cars that he plans to sell. It is by appointment only. So this is why it won't be like a showcase where you can just, you know, walk in off the street and look at it. And they plan to conduct everything within the building, and it's a limit of five cars at a maximum at a time only. And if there are any questions for staff?
Thank you. We're gonna open it up for our public hearing for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. You may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is John Kale Waddleton. I live at Twenty Manor Oak Lane. I'm looking to move in my business from two-twelve to a more indoor location. You know, like I said, we're gonna do five cars, but all my cars are fully restored, extremely nice. Nothing to sit outside, nothing to store outside. I don't do projects. Everything I do is to a T. Extremely clean. There'll be nothing, no parts outside, no cars tore apart outside. Like I said, I'm gonna do, ninety percent of my business is internet-based, where wire them, wire me the money. I ship the car sight unseen. Occasionally, I'll have somebody come, but I'll have all antique, you know, porcelain signs and old gas pumps and stuff inside for, you know, just people to look at. But cars have always been my passion since I was born. And like I said, this is more of a passion than a business, but it is how I make my money, so. But if you've got any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer anything you got, or... If not, that's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion, excuse me. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Appleweight, if you would. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir. I want to make sure you said everything is going to be conducted inside, and there's no cars or nothing on the outside.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the conditions, with all the conditions met by our Development Service Director of Development Services in regards to this property and this business. I'm looking for the actual number on here. I apologize, I don't have my glasses on. Here we go. Okay, thank you. CUP twenty-three zero 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 two.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Chairman, our final petition this evening. I would actually, staff would actually like to ask the board to table this one until the next meeting, April fourth, the first meeting in April, so that applicant can provide us with some additional information that we have requested as well, for us to be able to re-advertise it. This was a, it's an appeal to a final plat revision, which the Planning Commission actually denied it there here. So we just ask them to provide us a little bit more information on that, and then we will have the full case or full petition presented to the board on the fourth.
You say, I'm sorry, you say you want to pull it?
Yeah, we're requesting to table it for tonight. Yes, sir.
Okay. I seek a motion that we table this until our next board meeting. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, and I think by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Mason, that we table this until our next board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor? Stand table. Thank you so much.
Chairman, that brings us to the close of our public hearing section, but I do see that I have a streetlight petition listed next. If you want to go ahead and do that quickly?
You can go ahead and do that, yes.
So this is for a streetlight resolution. We're seeking approval. It's R zero three twenty-one twenty-three B. And it's a resolution for the Newton County Board of Commissioners to create a streetlight in the district for the Alcovee Crossing subdivision. And this is for them to add twelve streetlights to what they currently have. Residents have complained that the, it's close to the entrance, it's been in dark, and they'd like to add some more lights in there to facilitate that. And we did submit the signed petition by fifty-one percent of residents as well as the contract from the city and the resolution for, Chairman decide, should the board approve it?
Thank you. Commissioner, does I seek a motion, please? Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna use Chairman's privilege tonight to go ahead and bring up Ms. Brittany for seventeen A, so we can get our Chief Judge, get him back home safely. In a quick manner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a budget transfer to move funds from the IT budget to the Superior Court budget. This was a new position requested by the IT department, but I believe the Superior Court would like to supervise the department or the position, so we just need to move the funds. So we're just moving the funds from regular employee line item from IT's budget to the Superior Court, and this just requires board approval since we're moving departments.
Okay, thank you. I seek a motion, please. I seek a motion, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Let's on you.
Mr. Chairman, we are on number ten. Senior Services is requesting approval of the, of this fiscal year twenty-three American Rescue Plan ARPA contract with Northeast Georgia Regional Commission to accept funding for services. It's being presented by Ms. Frida Reed, Director of Senior Services. The contract period is January first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the amount of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents for telephone reassurance, home delivery and, uh, congregant meals.
Thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
We would like to get approval from the board to accept, uh, the funding from Northeast Georgia for the area rescue plan contract of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents. There is a match, which is eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. But that match is, is always taken care of by seniors, by the senior center, um, with our revenue and what we bring in. So we would like the board to accept and let us accept, um, the funding from Northeast Georgia.
Thank you so much. I seek a motion, please? It's been motion by, uh, Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Uh, the Senior Services is, is also located in District Three. And we, I just want to thank you, Ms. Frida, for all that you have been doing for our seniors. And I have noticed over the years, especially the past three, three to four years, I mean, it is getting really full of seniors. In fact, I was, it was suggested by my wife that I probably need to come over and join the seniors too as well. And I said, yes, ma'am, I'm going. And I know you have some great times over there with our seniors.
We're five hundred and ninety strong.
Yes, ma'am, and we thank you. It takes a special peoples.
Yeah.
I just want with special peoples in order to put up sometimes from grouchy old folks like myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, I'm about to call for that, that, uh, the vote, but say that number one more time.
Five hundred and ninety strong.
Wow. All in favor? It passes?
Thank you.
Four oh, thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number eleven, being presented by Dr. Norris Little, Chief Medical Officer, Intern CEO of Piedmont Newton. Piedmont Newton Hospital is requesting approval of ARPA funding.
Thank you, Ms., Dr. Little? Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come, come to, uh, speak with you tonight. I think the, uh, the last time I was here, we were in the middle of, uh, a pandemic, all wearing masks and scared half to death, um, about the things that were happening. And, and just to speak to that, you know, we are, uh, a year, over a little over a year since our last, uh, serious COVID surge in our community, which is, uh, great news. Um, and, and during the, the pandemic, the, the Piedmont Newton Hospital had a, you know, really an opportunity to, uh, serve in the community, not only in, in providing, um, healthcare in the midst of a very, very trying, uh, situation, uh, but also to work collaboratively, collaboratively with Newton County School System, the Chamber, multiple other civic organizations to provide information, uh, that helped people make decisions around, um, how they were, you know, managing through, through the pandemic. And, and so it's been, uh, really our, our privilege to do that. Even so, um, a- as we have moved through that, the, the pandemic has been, uh, extremely disruptive to the healthcare systems. Um, and, um, in our own community, uh, really since, since COVID, and that just brought some information here for you. On the, the, the third sheet just demonstrates that our average daily census in our hospital prior to the pandemic was running around the mid-fifties. We're now running close to, um, eight eighty. And that's putting strains on our, our current resources. Our emergency department visits, typically we were running around a hundred a day. Um, we're now pushing, you know, one, uh, one forty, one fifty visits a day. So significant increases in, in volume there as well. And, um, our inpatient admissions are also significantly up. And, and so what does that mean? Well, we reach capacity, we reach bed capacity in the hospital. So we have a full hospital and patients that are in the emergency room and require admission then need to wait in the emergency room until we have an available bed. Uh, sometimes that can be a day, sometimes it can be two days, um, until we can then transition them into a bed. And so we, um, have been running anywhere from five to ten patients holding in the emergency room. Um, and, uh, we created a plan and requested from the state a certificate of need for ten additional beds in the hospital. And, uh, this is, um, you know, I think, uh, a necessary item for us. Um, we look around the community and we see, uh, rooftops going up everywhere and population growing. And our, our hospital is, is close to the same size that it was. We did add twelve beds during the pandemic, uh, that we, uh, keep full really pretty much all the time. The, uh, the other issue for us, um, on the next to last page is that, uh, with COVID, um, we have, you know, had significant challenges around staffing as most, many, many other businesses have. But in the healthcare business, we have had to, um, hire large numbers of what we call contract employees or agency employees, nurses especially. And so before, before the pandemic, just for an example, our, our cost per month for agency nursing was around seven thousand a month. Uh, currently, it's running about seventy thousand dollars a month. So we really have experienced a lot of disruption in terms of our workforce. And, and the finally, uh, on the last page is just, um, what Piedmont Newton does in terms of contributions to our community. Um, we do around, uh, thirty to thirty-five million dollars worth of charity and indigent, uh, and indigent care, um, in our, in our community, which we're happy to do. Uh, we take all comers. Um, if you're sick, if you're ill, you have an issue and you come to our hospital, you know, we will, we will provide care. So we have a plan to increase ten beds. It's gonna require the movement of multiple departments in order to get those beds, um, actually accessible. And our estimated cost for the project is two point two million dollars. We, um, w- we, we think this has a direct impact on our citizens of our community in improving our ability to, uh, admit them to the hospital, get them a bed in the hospital when they're sick and, and to provide better care for them. And so we are requesting, uh, the consideration for ARPA funding for, for that project. And, uh, I'm certainly, uh, happy to answer questions that you may have, concerns that you may have, um, around that.
Thank you, I'm gonna, um, thank you for being here. We're gonna open it up for Commissioners to ask questions. Commissioner, Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much for this presentation and all that you do for our community. And I'm gonna apologize, this is the first time I'm seeing this information. That was one of the requests when I first heard about you being placed on the agenda, is that we have a workshop so we can talk directly one-on-one with Piedmont, so we know exactly what the needs are. Because although we are the county, there are cities that's also involved that also use the facility. So my question would have been, was the city, city's gonna also support your project as well? Because what I was informed was you're requesting the remainder of our ARPA dollars. So that's a huge, uh, push. We have to take care of our sick, that's what we definitely gonna do. But as Commissioners, we have to make sure that we're making decisions correctly and not receiving information the day of a vote, or possibly a vote.
Sure, I, I certainly understand that. Um, and, and, you know, for, for, in terms of our position, you know, any additional funding or any help with the funding would be helpful. Um, that the amount of the funding will, will kind of determine our timeline in terms of how quickly we can get the project accomplished. And so, um, you know, we, you know, we, uh, um, you know, would look for additional funding internally, but it may take longer for us to, uh, to, you know, to accomplish that. And, and our current need, um, you know, I mean, just to be, um, you know, we're looking for a bridge, you know, to help us, uh, during the next, uh, you know, for, for the short-term future. Um, we see the, the growth in the county, uh, being such that we will have to make a major infrastructure investment, uh, from a hospital standpoint, um, in this community in order to keep up with the growth, um, in the long term. So for, for, for the Piedmont Hospital currently, um, this is a bridge, uh, to get us to a point, um, where we will end up, you know, doing something significantly greater in terms of infrastructure. We continue to invest, um, in the development of medical services. As, as you can see in the old Walmart, we have, um, remodeled a significant amount of square footage in that to, uh, I, I was, somebody asked me if we were putting, um, operational, um, uh, operations in that building. And no, we're putting physicians and, you know, cardiologists and primary care and endocrinologists i- in that building to help, uh, serve the, the citizens of our community.
And my, my next question, you mentioned that you put that request in for the state. What was their response?
To who?
You said that you spoke with the state and put a request?
Yeah, so we, we had to, in order to increase our bed number, we had to request a certificate of need for, for the ten beds. And we re- re- received approval for those ten beds from the state.
And did the state have any, and I'm asking questions that were asked to me, so I don't think I'm, I hope you don't think I'm attacking.
I'm, I'll answer any question that I can, I will do my best.
Thank you so much, I just want to put that out there. So did the state have any, did you request funding from the state as well?
The state does not provide funding for, for additional, um, hospital beds or medical. And we, the state only has, they, their certificate of need is a process where they control the number of beds and services in communities. So for example, if we request additional beds, we have to request that approval from the state. If we wanted to request, uh, like we request to have a PET scanner come to our hospital, which they do now, but we had to request permission to have that from the state. But the state does not provide any funding for those services or beds.
And I'm not hogging the mic, Commissioners, I just have questions. So my question would be is once, if we happen to approve this and we know the county is growing, like right now I have four subdivisions that are being built in apartment complex. So the population's gonna increase.
Yes.
So what would be the contingency plan after we happen to assist? If the vote goes that way, if, if it is a vote tonight, assist, what would be the next plan? Because once our ARPA funds are gone, there's no more funds from the county. So that, that would be my concern.
Well, I mean, from a, from a healthcare standpoint, um, Piedmont is, is prepared to, uh, invest long-term in, in the necessary beds. But we are, you know, that's a five-year project, you know? So we're, we're looking at that. I mean, that's gonna take a, a new structure, you know, new, new construction in order for that to happen. We, we are, um, I mean, the, the hospital has been there since nineteen fifty-two. It's been added on multiple times. And in order to get the kind of bed capacity that we will need long-term, we are in the, in the process of planning for that kind of major capital investment. But we're, but that's, but that's a five-year project, not a, you know, we can do this in, you know, probably six months and, and get the additional ten beds, um, once funding is available. Uh, a, a longer-term strategy to meet the needs of the community is gonna, is gonna take a significant amount of planning and investment to make that happen.
And the ten beds will be suffice for you all at this particular time?
Seems to be at the moment, with our, looking at our current volumes, we think that will be sufficient for the time being, yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. C. I was on the board when, uh, when we changed over from Newton to Piedmont Newton. And I remember we, we had this big dinner and I think the, uh, if I'm not mistaken, uh, splotch, we had did, uh, I think, two million splotched it to improve or make the, uh, emergency room bigger. Add more beds and I think Piedmont, y'all agreed to give an additional two million dollars, uh, to us. And we were, at that particular time, giving some indigent money, I think every year to Newton. He said, well, now you don't have to do it this, this particular time, so we, we, we'll take care of it. And, and it was my understanding then, and at least I made it a priority, that everyone who comes to the emergency room, we want to be sure that it wouldn't be turned away.
That's correct.
Because I had noticed some of my constituents, people in Newton County, was beginning to be turned away because of maybe no insurance or maybe the cost constraints or, or whatever it was they're doing. So that was something that the former Chairman, uh, Keith Ellis and myself, we sit down, we made sure that nobody would be turned away. So, uh, but we also, I mean, I understand that we, we got these, these auto fund and we need to spend some of, but we also have, you know, some other needs in the community as well. I know there's a lot of people who, uh, have called me and said, look here and said, I'm almost out those and said, can you help me? In fact, and I feel so bad about them that, um, you know, I called Ms. Jackie and said, Ms. Jackie, anything you can do to help these people who are kind of outside? They said, well, I've been trying to call Ms. Kennedy and said she wants the phone. Because I believe she, you know, very high call volume from people who are, are really need of, of help. So, so I guess if it came down to the finances, do we have any, any type of money that's, that's from splotch that we could use also with maybe a, a part, a little bit of our auto funding? And I guess what would the, and I guess the question I'm asking, where could we get, uh, funding to, um, earn this splotch, maybe, I mean, some of our auto funding? Maybe a splotch or something, I think it's, well, I guess I'm calling you, Ms. Brittany.
Ms. Brittany?
Um, currently, we would not have any splotch funding because that was not an approved project.
Hold on, you, you finished, sir? You finished, okay. Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Just to expound upon what Commissioner Henderson was saying, that was my question. I, I don't think we had time to really assess, uh, what other needs. Because I know that money was set aside for additional projects that were for the community. So that's what I would like to know in detail. Was all the projects that are for the community were taken care of, not saying, this is, putting this on record, it's not saying that, stop, taking care of our hospital is not important, but also taking care of our constituents as well is important. And when we planned the ARPA funding, it was about giving to the community as well. Um, but I, that would be my concern, that's why I was hoping that we would have had a workshop versus it being here and we could have discussed it, talked about it, had a plan versus just voting about something on the spot. So that would be my concern, I don't know if that would come from Brittany as well? Is there any projects? Because once the funding is gone, then ARPA is once in a lifetime. We have nothing else remaining.
From my understanding, Brittany, you can ch- correct me if I'm wrong, uh, if you would, please come on back up. The only thing we have left, um, to be funded is capital improvement. We have, is that correct?
Because we set aside that two million dollars to add on any projects that we did not fund when we had the five million with the Commissioners. So it's set aside if we actually do that, so I do remember that from the actual meeting.
Yeah, so we, we do have a little under three million set aside of ARPA funds that have not been dispersed yet.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, the splotch would not be an option because that was not an approved splotch project. The only other funding, like Chairman said, would be capital improvements, but that would have to be funded by the general fund.
Yeah, that's my, my own, and I have another question about, uh, emergency services. I know you all control that as well, but I'll let Commissioner Henderson ask his question, but my question's about emergency services, since we have you here. Since we have you here.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. You know, because we know the hospital, they service not only, you know, unincorporated Newton County, Newton County, also the cities too as well. It's my understanding that the city of Covington received about 12 million. And I'm not sure what maybe some of the unincorporated cities may, but my part, what I'm try, what I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to say is, is that if we could all come together and, and give some money, and there should be no reason why the city of Covington, at the very least, should want to give money because we all use the emergency room, myself included. So if we come together as a, as a government, our government, unite. And we need, we need to kind of solve that problem and make sure that our, that we have enough beds and make sure that our citizens are being serviced the way we want them to be serviced. Because there's no better, no worse feeling for me is when I go in, in the emergency room and people sitting there for 12, 13 hours or several hours, because I've been there myself too as well, with my family members and sometime myself because I'm that age. But, you know, and, and we definitely need to do something to help. But if we all kind of, I would believe if we could pull ourselves together, you know, our governments, and figure out a way to make this, make this happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. Little. I, I want to emphasize to this board that Piedmont Newton is a not-for-profit hospital. And I, I want everybody to understand what Dr. Little said when he says they do not turn people away. Anyone in this county just is not, they're, they're not turned away if they're in need of medical attention. And as for the, the particular scenario that Dr. Little spoke of earlier, waiting around in emergency care for a bed to open up, I, my family member of mine experienced that firsthand December 23rd of this year. One in, one out in the, the main hospital from the emergency area. And that was a relatively short period of time, maybe five hours, but I heard Dr. Little speak of 24-plus.
Right.
At times. So I would urge this board to, I'm going to be in favor of the $2.2 million in ARPA funding for the hospital, for the, for the 10 additional beds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Well, first thing, Mr. Chairman, is there a way that you can possibly, as our spokesperson for the county, maybe meet with the cities to see what they have to combine with our dollars so we're not exhausting all of our funding? Because everybody in Newton County utilizes the hospital. Where we just, we just ma, maintain the unincorporated parts. So the incorporated parts, if we can find out from all the other cities, we would not, we won't be exhausting all of our funding.
Dr. Little, have you reached out to sit, to any mayor, city of Covington?
I have not. I'm certainly willing to do that. We, we, you know, we're, I mean, our, our mission is, you know, providing care to the citizens of the community and to work cooperatively with our city and county partners in all that we do. So we are, you know, we certainly can, you know, appro, approach them as, as well. I, I don't know the logistics of how that works, but you know.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that you haven't did that yet.
I have not done that.
But if it's the board's wishes tonight, I most certainly can do that. If that's what the board instructs, instructs me to do. I got, go ahead.
I just have one, one, one final comment. We work with the city of Covington when we, as for the warming shelter in our community. And I think they work very well. And so if we could work together, I think you, you might could get, I believe you'll get more than the 2.2 that you need because it's something that we are, we know that we all need. And hopefully we can, as a board, but, you know, if we have to bite the bullet, we just have to bite it, you know? But I think we can, I think they'll work with us for a common goal is to ensure, to ensure our citizens that our hospitals maintain where they should and we, you know, like I think we just said here, we want the chairman, if he would be so kind as to go in and speak with the, the city of Covington, other cities and, and see what we can come up with. I think it's worth a try.
I don't have a, I don't have an issue at all to do that. I just, I need, we get a motion out here on the floor somewhere.
I would like to make a motion to have our, our chairman, who is the spokesperson for the county, to meet with the cities to see what funding that we can get combining together for this project so we can help our hospital and the community.
So, so let's, let's do this. Let's do this.
Yes, sir.
Um, let's table this. Got to give me an opportunity to meet with the city of Covington. Now, are y'all asking, because, are y'all asking for the city of Covington to, to match the funding that we give? That, and, and we don't know a number yet, but.
I would like to know what the ci, the cities, not just one city, the cities in, in Newton County are able to provide.
So I can, I can, I'm, let me just say, we, we probably better ask the city of Covington.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So we ask the city of Covington.
Okay.
The other cities are, are really not big enough of a municipality to, to really ask for funding like that. So are y'all asking me to ask them to match a number that the request is? I really think it should be. That's fine. We do a million, they do a million.
I'm on the fence with the match because that's the all that we have left in ARPA. So if we have something pressing that has to come up, then we have no more funding but to go to our budget.
So not, not to match the 2.2, but to match whatever we give, which y'all like the city of Covington to match that number?
Okay.
Okay. All right. I need, yeah. Motion to table this.
Table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table for, to the next meeting? No, you're good. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson that we table this until our next board meeting to give me opportunity to speak with Mayor Horton. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that agenda for, to, table for a period of 30 days.
Okay, 30 days. Thank you, sir. Can you, can you just, would you amend your motion to 30 days?
Yes.
You will? Will you second that, Commissioner?
Okay.
All right. This has been motion that we table this until 30 days. And any more discussion? All in favor? I'll reach out to you, sir. It passed 5-0. We stand table and I'll reach out to you.
Thank you very much for your consideration. And please let me know if you have additional questions about the project.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number 12, being presented by Mr. Jeff Pryon, the project manager. Parks and Recreation Department Purchasing is requesting approval of Sun Belt Builders' contract for construction of Spring Hill Park. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
We're very excited to, to reach this milestone for the Spring Hill community and their, and their park. Last month, we issued a request for bids. We received two qualificat, qualification-based bids from two groups. One was the Astro Group and one was from Sun Belt Builders. Sun Belt Builders has been deemed to be the most competitive bidder and therefore the one that we're recommending you guys to award the contract and allow us to enter into construction with. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Let me get a motion on the floor first. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve as stated by Mr. Pryon.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, I, I know, you know, I've been kind of keeping up with it and I've been going over there and, and, you know, talking with Dwayne, Mr. Mason. And I noticed the, the project, Pavilion and, and other stuff in the community center, you know, it seemed like on the first set of drawings that it was kind of more upscale. And as I, when I got the second set of drawing, it was more kind of, it seemed like it had been down scaled for whatever, for whatever reason. So I, I, I guess I'm, what I'm seeing is, is that we don't, I would like not to see us to start off with this upgrade drawing and then move it down to maybe a, a less of a building or smaller of a building or whatsoever. So could you kind of tell me just a little bit about that? Because I've been, been asked that, that question.
So Commissioner Henderson, the, the master plan that was presented to the board, I mean, to the, to the community and then registered to the board, and the vision that we had for the project is, as far as the scale of the buildings, the size of the buildings and the architectural style is been dictated in the design from the beginning. So what we are entering into contract today is to build a, a community building that is the same size as what we presented to the community, the same architectural style. The, the design of the layout has changed a little bit because the site changed a little bit, but it still has all the aspects of the, and the components that we presented to the community. And I think, and also we, and we worked with Dwayne and his staff to make sure that from an operational standpoint, that the building could be durable, easy to maintain and secure.
Okay. And one, one last question. I just want to be sure because they made sure when I was campaigning, said, one thing we want to make sure that you do is make sure we have a walking trail at that facility. So, uh, so I'm, I'm, I believe it's in there, but I just want to say it out in public.
Right. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
First, I want to congratulate the districts being able to get Parks and Recreation. I do pray that District 3 does move in that direction as well. But my question would be to the county attorney, I'm looking at the agenda. So if we're approving the cost of $5 million and the next agenda item is to increase to 2.5 million, isn't that like a contradiction? Are we increasing past the 5 million?
Well, you're approving the construction contract for $5,119,365. The total project budget is going to be increased to $4,500,000. Is that, that's how I read that.
So that's where I'm confused on before I vote. I want to make sure because those two kind of contradictory.
These two really kind of go hand in hand. Um, so yeah, the 4.5 million is actually the ex, well, not excess, the estimated overage collections that we need. And there was originally also 495,000. So it brings the total budget to $5,995,426.
So the cost is not the 5.1 that I'm, that we're about to vote on, the contract?
That's the cost for the Sun Belt contract. So you have other costs that include.
So their, so their design, engineering, construction work is 5 million and the park itself is 4.5 million?
The 4.5 number is just the number we need from the overage collections. So the original budget in the splash 2017 was 495,000. So then we need to take 4.5 million from the overage collections to bring a total budget to $5,995,426.
So five, so that's the total cost of the project?
Yes.
Okay. I just want it to be clear before I start a vote. Thank you.
Anyone, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you. I, I just want to give Commissioner Cowan, who's kind of birthed this park over at Spring Hill. And since I had been re-elected and can kind of have to kind of do what we need to hard to get it running, they'll help. Like say anything? I'm putting you on the spot.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Henderson. Uh, one of the key things, I think, and I may have said this before, there wasn't enough money put into the splash to even do the grading. And those, the people that live in Spring Hill community, they've already had to put up a little landfill. They've already been promised a lot of things out there that have not been, come to fruition from this board. Uh, I think the Spring Hill Park, no matter, and we know that we got some additional costs to do and, but I think that's going to be a good amenity for that community out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
This is just to make a statement. I, I, I hope you heard the words, promise to a community. So I want to make sure that we taking care of all the communities in the county so that every community is taken care of. So I would never vote against Parks and Recreation and a livelihood for a community.
All in favor? Thank you. It passed 5-0. Ms. Brittany.
So the next item is just basically what I had already stated, where we need to utilize 2.5 additional million dollars in the overage collections from where we had originally put 3 million. So bringing the total splash budget to $5,995,426.
I seek a motion, please. So moved as stated by Ms. Brittany. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed 5-0. Brittany.
The next item is just a request for the county to opt-in to another opioid lawsuit. Um, the county had opted into the first one and we've received the funding for that. There is a second one. Patrick can probably speak on the legality of that. But we do have to have board's approval to opt-in to the settlement and that is, the settlement needs to be signed by April 18th.
So to give you a little more detail, there are a number of different classes of defendants that are part of the national opioid litigation. You have approved settlements for some of the previous classes, this current class. The pending settlements at their largest number are roughly $18 billion. I think it's five different defendants. The total amount of the settlement will depend upon how many governments opt-in. You are opting in, if you approve this action tonight, you will opt-in to be a part of these global settlements. I cannot tell you, I cannot even estimate for you how much Newton County's portion of this settlement will be. That depends on how many governments opt-in, how many local governments within the state of Georgia opt-in. It also depends upon how many states opt-in. And the deadline for these global settlements to be approved is April 18th. And after the settlement's approved, then the state will take its portion of the settlement, whatever it ultimately is, and allocate it among all of the opting-in local governments. So if you do not opt-in, you will get nothing out of this. If you do opt-in, you will receive whatever proportion of the funds that, that ultimately come out of the state. The funds are limited in their use under this group of, of settlements. The, you have to spend anywhere between 85 and 95% of the proceeds on opioid mitigation, either correcting the problems already caused by the opioid crisis or trying to combat future opioid crises. And we'll just have to work with how to, how to resolve where those funds will ultimately go. But your action today will merely opt-in to give you an opportunity to receive some portion of these settlement funds.
Thank you. I seek a motion, please. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes 5-0. Thank you.
I realized I skipped number 14.
Yeah.
Sorry. My apologies. Number 14 is the financial report for February. February is the eighth month of our fiscal year. So that puts us roughly around 66% of the way through our fiscal year. So I'll start with our general fund revenues. To date, we've brought in 71.4 million. So that puts us at 84.39% of our revenues. That's typical for this year because we are revenue-heavy when our property taxes come in. These are just two graphs that show the monthly revenue collections and then our revenue collections to actual collections. General fund expenditures, to date, we are at 53.2. That puts us at 62% of our budget to actuals. So we are trending a little bit lower, about roughly 4% less on our expenditures than actual to budget. And these are the monthly graphs for expenditures per month and then the month to date, or the year-to-date actuals versus budget. So this just shows our actual revenues for the year and our actual expenditures for the year. We have three enterprise funds. We have the water fund. Their revenue to date is 6.6 million. Their expenses to date are 4.5 million. The solid waste fund, their revenue to date is right around 5 million. Their expenses to date are 3.6 million. And our Gaithers and factories. And our Gaethers and Factory Sholes Fund, their revenue actual, um, year-to-date is two hundred and one thousand and the expenses to date are a hundred and fifty-five thousand. We have two active SPOLOST. The two thousand eleven SPOLOST has one open project, the Historic Jail. Our two thousand seventeen SPOLOST, we are currently working on a majority of these projects here. Pretty much every project's been started, um, with the exception of just a couple. So our current balance in the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST is thirty-five point three million. And then that's our actual collections to date. So our actual collections to date are, is ninety million. We have five more months left to collect on that, um, by the way, so we're getting close to the end of the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST collections. And our Impact Fee Fund has a balance of four point eight million. And that wraps up the financials. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
So we are on sixteen now?
I think you have sixteen as well.
Let me grab these packets. And this is the, um, bond resolution for the two thousand twenty-three SPOLOST, Patrick, and then our bond counsel is also here, um, if we have any questions regarding that. But the resolution was just, um, kind of finalized today, so I'm going to hand those out.
And while Brittany distributes those, you have authori, you have already authorized us to proceed with the SPOLOST bonds. The voters approved the SPOLOST and authorized the bond. This action tonight is approving the bonds to be sold. They will be sold. Uh, the, the transaction, I think, can y'all tell us when? Will, it will happen today, effective upon approval of the bond resolution, execution of the bond documents. And, um, if, come up and explain, I want to make sure they're aware of the, the premium and all of the, the financial stuff. And I want you to go over it rather than me because I'll mess it up.
Good evening. Um, my name is Brian Husky. I'm with Stiefel Nicholas.
Good evening, sir.
We, um, we're, we're helping you all with the issuance of the bonds. This is a process that started a couple, three months ago, um, with the preparation of the official documents that we went to offer with, as well as, um, a preparation of a rating, uh, analysis. And as part of that, um, the county was previously rated double A two, um, by Moody's Investor Service. We went through a rating diligence call and, um, based on the credit strength of the county and a lot of the, the dynamic growth going on with the county, you were actually upgraded, um, to a double A one. So now you're one of the fifteen strongest rated counties in the state, um, which is a testament to everything that y'all are doing. Um, really is pointing to, to the economic growth, the financial strength, and just everything, everything is pointing positive. So congratulations for that. Um, based on that rating upgrade, um, as you probably have heard, there's been a few bank failures in the past few days. And part of that, um, when something like that happens, investors want to go to something that they consider very strong. And Newton County bonds are considered strong. So we got a very strong reception today. We priced the bonds today, locked in a rate of two point five eight percent for your, um, review. Um, I think at one point we were looking at over three percent rates when we were talking with you all, um, you know, late last year, earlier this year. So, you know, I think it's a, a nice culmination of a rating upgrade and good ti, market timing. They're able to lock in the two point five eight percent. Um, it's going to fund twenty-four point two million dollars of, of, uh, projects that you've identified. And then if it's approved tonight, then we're, uh, we're on schedule to close by the end of next week.
Wow. That's a great job, great job, great job. You have anything back for the motion? I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I was, I was, I was looking for the, uh, the actual, uh, projects.
I'm sorry?
The actual projects that are going to be bonded.
Do you have, do you have a list?
They're, I don't think they're listed in there. Yeah, they're not in there. Um-
But I think we know them though.
Jeff, do you have a copy of that with you? Do, do you have a list of the, the bonded projects?
And, and the reason why I'm saying that because I had, uh, promised my constituents that R.R. Cousins was going to, uh, be a partially dead early. I think we discussed it at some point. I mean, I want to be sure that that was on that, um, that was on that list. You remember we had the discussion concerning about R.R. Cousins and he obviously, I was going to figure out a way to, to start doing something on it.
Yes, sir. So the, um, the bond projects that, um, that we're moving forward with are... They are the, the countywide parks and rec, uh, projects of which we've got a, a bid out now for upgrading the City Pine, uh, athletic lighting system. We've got RFPs, my, my proposals are coming in for design services this coming Thursday for the Southeast Community Park, the Westside Community Park, the Community Water Park, and then also for the design build services for the Senior Enrichment Center project. And then there's fleet, both general and public safety fleet, uh, vehicles that are in the bond as well. And so that, those are the bond projects that we're working on.
But if, if my memory serves me right, we had specifically asked during the course of that particular meeting and I was told that it would be added onto it because the concern was the, uh, if we didn't add it on to the being bonded, it might never get done. And I think I, I left him with thinking there was a sort of an agreement, uh, maybe a verbal agreement that it would be added to it. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking on kind of what happened.
So that project, there, there's a series of projects that are going to be driven by the accrual of cash that starts this coming July. And as, as Brittany could tell you, we, we will start to get our first, um, cash received in August. And the projects that will be started on that, one of those is the R.L. Cousins project. So, so I think what we were saying is those projects will get started this year.
Okay.
But they won't be bond funded. That particular one won't be bond funded.
Okay. So if, if we could be so kind, Miss Susan, if, could we kind of, um, make mention of that in a minute?
Yes, sir. Okay, sir. Because that's, that, that's something that came from last night. Um, Commissioner Sanders, go ahead.
I was just going to ask that question. I think that document should be distributed to the commissioner so we are aware. Um, unfortunately, I was not at the SPOLOST meeting last night, but it was distributed to the SPOLOST committee. So if we can get a copy of that document, because that would have been great to have today for the meeting to look over. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We didn't get a motion yet. Can I get a motion, please? I'm trying to pick out who motioned. Who motioned? Okay, okay. Um, all in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Thank you.
Hold on, my papers have gotten out of order over here. Item number seventeen is a resolution for the county to authorize investments for Georgia Fund One. So we have to have an investment account when we do bonds. So we have decided that Georgia Fund One, um, would be our best option to hold the investment for the bond funds. So this is just a resolution designating that.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Next is Miss, um, Mr. Patrick Jostetter.
Good evening, uh, board. Thank you for your work tonight. You may recall back in December, I presented to the board a proposal or a request from Gaethers Church that the county engage in an exchange of property. At the time, the board tabled that request with instructions to, for Commissioner Edwards to meet with the church to try to work out a resolution that would be, uh, more equitable to the county. The original proposal, as I presented it, um, involved the county conveying to the church more property than the church would convey to the county. The, the, uh, updated request from Gaethers Church is as follows, and I've shown on the map in front of you. There is a roughly five and a half acre parcel, the further northernmost parcel with a yellow star on it. That property is currently owned by Gaethers Church. It was originally owned by the county. The county exchanged property with Gaethers back when we were acquiring property for the, for the reservoir. Gaethers owns that roughly five acres. It's, it's about five and three quarters acres. They would like to exchange that property for the property that the white arrow points, the white arrow points at a, two parcels with a red star on it. Those two parcels are directly in front of Gaethers Church. They are between Gaethers Church and the road. Those two parcels are roughly four and three quarters acres based on the tax assessor. And those acreages sometimes are off. The request is that the county and Gaethers exchange those two parcels. In other words, the county will convey, would convey the property in front of the church to the church and the church would convey that northernmost parcel to the county. I'm not asking you to approve the exchange tonight. What I'm asking the board to do is authorize me to move forward with the process to give you the information you need to make the final determination as to whether or not the exchange will happen. What we, what we will need to obtain are surveys of both of these properties. We will need a survey of the property in front of the church, which is the property the county owns, to determine the exact acreage. We will need to confirm whether or not the Gaethers Church's existing property needs to be resurveyed or not. Um, we will then also have to get both parcels appraised. Georgia law allows you to engage in one of these exchanges provided that the property you receive is worth the same or more than the property you give up. So the only way we can proceed with this exchange is if you are convinced by appraisal that the northernmost property that Gaethers owns is worth at least as much as the property that we would be conveying to Gaethers. Gaethers has agreed to incur the costs of those, but I need to order them. So what I need is this board's authorization to move down that path to come to the decision as to the exact acreages and the values so I can present those to you at a further meeting. And I would guess, excuse me, I would guess the surveys will take the longer of the time. And I'm a little hesitant to guess how long a survey of those parcels will take. But I would a, anticipate that it's going to be at least two or three meeting cycles before I can get this back to you. So that's what I'm looking for tonight, just authorization to move forward with the process, not authorization, not approval of the exchange itself.
I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number eighteen. I'm sorry.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, sir. Um, as we know, this park was placed in the community, uh, Fairview Estates Community, which is a county-owned park, in two thousand and eight. It is, it was built on a stabilization grant, which is through the Department of Community Affairs. Um, because of this being a park that was placed under the stabilization grant, I did speak directly when we first had the meeting with the, in, the gentleman, I can't remember his name, who told us that it was closed, that the project was closed, it was completed, that it could not be sold. And I did call the State Director of Department of, of Community Affairs and he also confirmed that, that this park cannot be sold or anything because it was bought with a stabilization grant. Unless the county want to pay back the millions of dollars it cost to implement or place that park inside a community, we have to make some suggestions on how we can actually do that. We know of the, the recent incidents and there's been incidents before I even came in office, but that's not the, the issue. The issue is what we're going to do as a county. Um, we had the State Parks Director who came out and saw the park, it was myself and, and our, our Parks and Rec Director, and he gave suggestions that we did do. Thank you, uh, Dwayne for doing it as well. Um, but there's some other things that we did not complete. One of the things that he looked at for safety, and I also submitted that to the board, was to close in the area where the subdivision is actually located and have another entrance. Um, when we were actually working on the youth facility, our project manager had identified a road, which is hint and chase. And also when I had a meeting, that was called to a meeting by the HOA of Fairview Estates in two thousand and twenty-one, they also alerted me, alluded me to the actual road, which is hint and chase, where they requested for that to be another entrance into the park and to close it off. So that actually came from two thousand and twenty-one as well, but reiterated by our, our professionals in, in the area. And as well as closing off the entrance, fencing in the area so that our law enforcement and also our Parks and Rec can maintain it. The park is completely open. Before I came in office, it was a request from the residents to place the lights. We have the lights in the areas where they now can see in the park because individuals who actually live by the park were saying they couldn't hear the noises. So all they saw was darkness. So we placed the lights in the area. But right now, the park is completely open. We cannot stop residents from going to the park because it's county-owned and their taxpayers' dollars are paying for it. So we have to come up with a solution, commissioners. We had an incident with a massive shooting. They just had a fire and I saw the pictures of the fire. I didn't find out about that fire until I went to church the next day. And HOA, I think she's out there, the president and the vice president, Ms. Waters, stopped me because we were sitting on the same road, told me about the fire. So we have to come up with a solution for safety. Yes, law enforcement can be included, but we the one who place a park inside of a subdivision. So we have to figure out solutions on keeping that community safe as well as not even having any issues as far as lawsuits that could potentially happen in the future if one of the residents gets hurt or somebody gets hurt on that property without it being properly maintained. So I'm open to this discussion on what can we do, although I provided some suggestions. But I'm open to hear from my colleagues on protecting the community to make sure we can maintain that park for safety as well as taking care of the residents in the area.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you. I think it, it would be a, uh, a great access, uh, to have cameras. I mean, this, based what we, what we, uh, do at Nelson Heights. And, and I believe that it has kind of cut down a whole lot of, of us not knowing who may be walking around the, um, county's, uh, property. And as, as well, when, when we have functions there, when there's a lot of people, like, uh, I think three years ago, four years ago, we had, um, Nelson Heights thing and there were several hundred peoples on the property. We, uh, we included, um, chef protection, you know, in other words, we had our deputy deputies kind of patrol, uh, within the crowd. And it's, 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 um, it's little things like that that we need to do in order to protect our parks. Because if, if I'm not mistaken, I, I think, or, and I, and I guess this is, is, um, to Commissioner Mason, do, uh, do y'all have a, uh, a security officer, a security guard that's paid for by the county that maybe at some point or sometime patrol with any dogs?
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, honestly, I believe that this whole subject about, regardless of where it is in the county park, um, I really believe that we should allow law enforcement to take the lead on this matter. And we work with law enforcement, um, allow them to give us what their suggestions or what their recommendations are in regards to dealing with this particular crime. Um, I actually did state that in the email that was sent, uh, that I believe that law enforcement should take the lead and we not overreach. Uh, we are policymakers. Uh, we're not here to fight crime. That's not our role. It's not our job. Uh, but we can work with our partners in law enforcement. If they come to us and say, "Board of Commissioners, uh, we would need additional funding so that we can get more deputies out on the road," then that's something that this board can do. Um, so that would be my recommendation, that we allow law enforcement to take the lead and we follow their lead, um, on what needs to happen to help address these concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let me, let him finish. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
I asked that question because, uh, before we purchased the addition of two acres and before we did the community center, we asked that the office of chef come in and tell us what we need to do in order to make it safe for the citizens who might be, uh, participate or play ball before we got the ba, uh, ball field there, before we got the basketball court. What do we need to do in order to make it safe? What do we need to do in order to make it safe? And he gave us an assessment and said that you, cameras, he said if you have a sixteen, if you, if you at least pitch out for somebody, a sixteen-year-old party, sweet sixteen party, say you need to have deputies in it. So, in other words, he told me, he told us what we need to do in order to make it safe. And I, I thought that was the best way to do, rather than just have vicinity and you do what the county don't have nothing. And then something happened, and the first thing I said, "Whoa, I should have did this." So we tried to think beyond the curve, rather than being, we gotta be behind the curve instead of be over the curve, so that we had done. And, and I said out to just, to say, Commissioner Sanders, I think if, if you could sit in with him or somebody's captain, whomever, and he could tell you exactly what's needed in order for safety for, for our constituents and for that community.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I actually did speak with that. But the difference between the other parks and the locations is none of our parks are placed directly inside of a subdivision. This is the only park that we have in Newton County that is placed inside of a subdivision where the residents thought it was owned by the subdivision. So that's the other issue. We have to look at the people and the safety. So although we may, I did state to put law enforcement in it. That was in my original email before Commissioner Mason responded to that email. I said it needs to include law enforcement. But law enforcement wasn't the one who made the decision as policymakers to place a park inside of a subdivision. So we have to figure out parameters on how to make it safe. As I stated, the State Director of Parks and Rec, that's the person who's over the State of Parks and Rec, came out and said what needed to be done. So I don't know how more professional we can get in regards to that. He even mentioned that he wouldn't even bring his own family out there because it looked dangerous. So that came from the state. So we have to do something as a board, because we made that decision. I know all of us, a lot of us weren't here when it was done, but we have to make a decision on how we're gonna protect this park. And that's one of the things, one of the reasons why I want to discuss it, because sitting back waiting, we gonna have another issue. Because we used to have a rec board that maintained our parks. They did work with the sheriff's office, but we no longer have that. So the sheriff inherited, because Fairview Community Park was not listed on the website as an official park in Newton County. So I want you guys to be aware of that. It's, it's listed now in two thousand and twenty-one, but before then, it was not on the parks, listed as a park in Newton County.
Yes, but let me, let me, let me say this. So I think Commissioner Mason, I think Commissioner Henderson, and I'm not going against anything what you're saying, but I think they're right. Because if you look at Nelson Heights Community Park, I mean, it's, it's two minutes, it's, it's less than two minutes from, you said it's not in the neighborhood, but it's less than two minutes from Commissioner Henderson's house.
But they have a gate.
Let me finish. I didn't cut you off. It's less than two minutes from, I mean, it's less than two minutes, I ain't gonna do that tonight. It's less than two minutes from Commissioner Henderson's house. If you look at another park, and I think it's, huh? But, no, no, I'm just talking about inside of, inside of a.
Can you answer this one question?
So let me finish. I didn't cut you off. So let me finish.
Oh, they, everybody was talking back here, so I didn't know we were having a discussion.
Let me finish. I didn't cut you off.
I didn't, I didn't know, because Commissioner Mason was talking.
So when you look at, when you look at the park in Down and Pace, it's a county-owned park, we just did a ribbon cutting on it. It is directly inside of a neighborhood. So we got to engage the sheriff, first of all. We got to engage the sheriff to start these conversations and to see how we can address the issue at Fairview State Park. But go, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
So we're gonna do it in order. Commissioner Mason first, and then I come to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was gonna say, there may have been some things that we may not have done the right way in the past, or previous boards may not have done it the right way in the past. Of course, I've only been on the board for four years, so I can't go back and say or fix what was done in the past. But what we can do going forward, make sure that we bring law enforcement into these discussions as we are developing our community. Now, at this point, some of these parks, for example, Fairview, it is already there. It has been built. And so now, I think what we should do versus us trying to say, "This is what needs to happen," and we're not the law enforcement subject matter experts, reach out to the law enforcement subject matter experts to say, "This is occurring within this particular park. What is your recommendation, or what do you think should happen?" And if law enforcement says, "Well, we need additional funding," which is really, for the most part, what we can do is because this board is not here to fight crime. This board is not here to make sure that our citizens are safe. This board is here to put policies in place. And I think sometimes, well, I just want to make sure that this board is.
So, 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 so hold on. So I want to make sure that we correct that, what you just said, because I know you didn't, that ain't what you meant.
Yes.
Commit, so you said, you, we want to make sure that we give the law enforcement the tools to make sure that our community is safe.
That is correct.
That's right.
That's correct.
Go ahead, sir.
And so we can't go back and fix what was in the past. But what we can do going forward, we can actually make sure that we have these conversations, and we have all partners at the seat, or having a seat at the table, to actually be able to address these particular concerns.
So, go ahead.
I do have, Mr. Chairman, this is not my first time bringing this to the board. I can pull up multiple emails for two years, talking about correcting this park. One of the things, all the parks that you mentioned, they have fences. Commissioner Henderson's park has a fence. Denny Dobbs has a fence. There's a fence in City Pine. This park does not have a fence around it. So anybody can go inside that park. Those gates can be locked. You can't lock the gates inside a Fairview Community Park. Although law enforcement needs to be involved, I've already talked about that. I brought that in, it was in my original email, before anybody, it was involved. But we still have obligations. We can't just put it all on, on law enforcement when we have obligations where we need to at least fence it in. All those parks you guys mentioned, although it may be two minutes from Commissioner Henderson's house, but he's not the sheriff, so I don't know what y'all expected to do, two minutes from his house, he still has to call the police. But at least he has a fence to lock the gate. They don't have a fence.
That's, 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 you know, so this is the thing. There's a, there was a proposal out there to put a youth facility in that park.
And when that youth facility was proposed, that was included in there. That was included in the whole project. And you could bring Dewayne up, if you'd like to. It was to close off the entrance from the subdivision, to fence it in, and to provide a new location. Our GIS also individual submitted a map to show where a new road, well, not a new road, where the road was actually identified, so that the traffic can be taken away from the residents. All that was in the plan, if that was gonna be put out there. That was done by project, your project manager, he brought that to my attention as well, that could be a new entrance. And they were also talking about working with Hint Chase to extend the trail from that park. So Hint Chase, who was also promised Parks and Rec, can also utilize that trail. There was a lot of plans to make that park safe. So that was all planned. Although we trying to bring the Westside Youth Facility and turn, flip the script, but I'm talking about safety right now.
That, that's not flipping the script, I'm just saying. So what, what I can do, so what I can do, I can ask the sheriff to come to the next board meeting, if you guys would like, to give us a proposal on what would help make Fairview Park safer. And I'm sure he won't have any issues with doing that. That's good, y'all, good with the board? All right? I'll reach out to the Office of Sheriff and ask him to come to the next board meeting, and let him give us an idea of what he needs to help make that park safe. Next is the Westside Youth Facility. Mr. Prime, if you would, please come on up. Hearing that there's a update that need to be given to the board, information that was given out last night. Could you update us, please?
Yes, sir. So the, the update that I'd gave to the advisory committee last night was that the Addison property, which was the property that was approved, authorized us for us to move forward with, Mr. Addison withdrew that property as a consideration. And so that property is not now available for us to evaluate as a option for the facility.
Commissioner Sanders?
So our, our last discussion was in regards to giving, that's before our county manager was in place, our Entrim County Manager, we, when I asked the question, what was the next step? And the next step was to locate land. So I don't know if you were even given that directive from our previous Entrim County manager to move forward. See, this is why we have to have discussion, because we're sitting dormant. Because when we talked about it before, I was trying to put it on the agenda, I asked what the next step was. And our Entrim County Manager stated he was gonna get with staff, because that was the actual directive, to move forward with finding land. So the project is at a standstill. If you wasn't given a directive, that's why we have to have a discussion, Mr. Chairman, because nobody knows what's going on. There's nothing been moved. And just to add to that, District Three is the most dense area in the county. Before redistricting, we had the most residents of twenty, almost twenty-seven thousand. We had to lose residents so the other districts can be evened out to have people. And actually, we still have the most people, because I have four subdivisions being built, and people are coming in and buying it. And I have a apartment complex that just opened up. So we really still have the most people. It's just not on paper, based on the census, which everybody in the county did not do the census. So with that being said, we have all of these kids in the most dense area that has no Parks and Rec. And from that incident that happened on Saturday night, based on the footage that was provided, that was kids that did that. So they're, based on the footage, allegedly, let me put allegedly out there, they have footage of children that were going around doing various things, and it's a possibility, that allegedly, that the children did it. So we have to find some kind of ways to, to, to move forward with this project. We're just sitting there. And nobody has been given a directive, nothing is going moving forward. We have homes that are being built, schools that are almost overcrowded. Newton High is almost at the capacity. You have Clements and, and Fairview are almost at the capacity. Those areas are in that box right there. I spoke to the principal at Live Oak, she's almost at capacity. Those are all kids that live in that area. So we have to move forward. So my, my, my question to the board is, are we giving a directive to our project manager to move forward to locate land? Because obviously, there has not been anything given since the last time we spoken.
Yeah, that's, from my understanding, they're looking for land, so.
And can you tell me, where are we looking for land? In what area you're looking for the land? That you possibly would be looking for?
So we would be, we would be looking in the same area that we had been looking at prior. You know, we had developed kind of that bubble that showed the density, highest density population that was for Districts Two, Three, and Four. And so, you know, that's the, that's the areas that we'd, we'd be looking for property as we're authorized.
So in that square, I'm sorry, in that box area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure. Because I don't believe there's, based on the map that you gave us of land that's available, the only land that's left is really the monk property.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. Property, properties change. I mean, you, I know that when we started looking for those properties last fall, I mean, something could, something could have come up that we weren't aware of. And so I, you know, when authorized, as soon as I am, we will continue to look for other properties. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. What would be the directive for us to give a deadline to come back with the property? That's what we definitely need to have that, because we need to put something in place, because I've been called into meetings to give feedback on the Westside Youth Facility, and I couldn't answer questions. So can we give a directive of a timeframe of when we're gonna come back before the board with property, so we can move forward with this project?
I, I might suggest, until a site is selected, that you consider requiring a monthly report, something like that. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure it would be a good idea to say there's a deadline to select a parcel, but maybe just a recurring report until.
No, not selected, maybe I said that wrong, I'm sorry, Patrick. I meant, when would the project manager come back to us with results?
Yeah, that's my recommendation, is have him come back monthly until it's completed. So you'll know if he's, if, if the, if the project manager comes back in a month with no recommendations, you'll know that maybe you need to do something else. But, I mean, it might make sense just to have a recurring, a standing item maybe on the second meeting of each month.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna say this, can we put a, a date on it?
Yeah, just do a standing, a standing agenda item, the second meeting of each, each month for an update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final reading, Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the final reading for item number, let me get the pronunciation, for alcohol beverage license, number eighteen, is going to be Wadha Wanaya USA LLC, thirty-six, thirty-three Salem Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. The licensee is Sahil Wadha, Wadha Wanaya, which is District Two.
Some moves stated by our executive assistant.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Next is citizens comment. This is an opportunity we allow citizens to make comments. You may comment this time, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Robinson, and I live at fifty-five Brown Thrasher Run in Oxford, Georgia. And just sitting here, I'd just like to say that it, it really appears that you guys have some animosity on this board. And I'm just gonna just blatantly say that it's embarrassing. And I would like, you know, that you guys would, some kind of way, if you can, you know, try to rectify whatever these underlying issues are amongst yourselves, because it's really embarrassing for the public to see. And I think this is being recorded, and I think y'all need to really, really consider, you know, being an example for us as citizens of Newton County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good evening.
Unfortunately, I'm disappointed again, just listening to you guys discuss the park itself in Fairview Estates. I myself have been here, me and my husband, we've been here since two thousand and fourteen. We were unaware that that park was for the county, for the public, until two thousand and twenty-one. And I still refuse to go in that area because I don't feel comfortable. I feel that it's a part of the residence, and there's no way of parking or just being in that area without feeling like that's private property. I feel, believe that the Westside facility should begin as soon as possible with a location, and there should be a deadline. It is not fair that it has been on the two thousand and seventeen spots. I vote every year, and I voted for that as a faith and belief that we would have it. Unfortunately, we still don't have it. My son has graduated in this county, and my children are being raised in this county. And I think it's fair that our district should have a safe park and recreation. When the skate park was vandalized, you closed that gate. And I remember, you have gates on your park. Why can't we not have gates on our park? Why can't we have an area to enter and not be in an actual neighborhood? I think it's only fair. Two minutes sounds like a drive, but in the facility or the subdivision within itself, that's just, it's like comparing apples to oranges. So we need to be fair amongst the district when it comes to our parks and recreation. So, we need to be fair amongst the district when it comes to our parks and recreation. Two point two million dollars being added to another, um, area, and we have nothing. So, all I'm asking is for fairness. Thank you.
Hey, can you state your name, please?
My name is Ivory Coburn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir.
Do you want to hear about his name before we get started, we here as a committee?
No, go ahead, you, you fine.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have been, uh, since, uh, committee up here, a different organization, we have been meeting throughout, uh, the last couple of months, and we met with, uh, Commissioner Mason twice. We met with, uh, Elena and Commissioner Henderson. And we, uh, would like for you personally to come to our next meeting, which will be March the thirty-first. Also, if, uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Edwards, if Commissioner Stan, uh, Ron, uh, Cowan, they also vote along, you know, they vote for the whole county, so they not, they not excused for not coming to the meeting. We need to have a meeting, we want to invite one of them, I don't know whether three can come at one time. Can three come at one time? We would like for them three to come at the next meeting, March the thirty-first, because you have a responsibility, the citizen elected you, and there's so much stuff going on here. We need, we need to get, uh, we have had meetings, we asked Commissioner Mason to meet with, uh, Commissioner Sanders, he said he never would meet with her. Some of this stuff need to stop. Like the man said before we came up, it's an embarrassment, and it started again tonight. We never would, you never would get anything self, as long as she come up with something, he kill it. And so, we need to meet, we need to stop this tomorrow, we need to stop this him. You, you killing everything, you killing everything, you don't want nothing in that district. And every time something come up, you kill it. So, if you could, Brother Chairman, you, 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 you're the leader, and I have all respect for you, but you can, you can bring these people together and cut out some of this stuff. You have the authorities, cut out some of this stuff going on. So, if you would, please, we are inviting you, March the thirty-first, to come, and bring, 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 uh, Commissioner Cowan, bring Commissioner Edwards. They vote, they vote for things in this county. It's not just his district, he voted over in that other district. Bring them while we can get some kind of resolution. Could we get a commitment for you to come, please?
You can get a commitment for me to come, um, and I'm answering, let me answer out in my time.
Okay.
That way, ain't gonna, no confusion. I answer, I answer my comments, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yeah?
Yeah, I'm Joseph Reed, uh, one oh one oh nine Village Drive Northwest, and, uh, you know, and I, I lost a nephew maybe a couple of months ago, uh, and it, it was really hurtful, you know? He was nineteen, just getting out of high school, you know, and, uh, you know, and I had a daughter in the third district, you know, and I had to fight for her, you know, to be able to get through school. Uh, and she in college now, and I'm, thank God, I, I fought, and I seen a lot of things that happened in that area of the third district, and, uh, you know, and I, I, I agree with, I agree with some of the stuff you saying. I agree, you know, because, but the community, we have to be involved in this too, we're just not on the police. We have to step up to do some of this stuff, man. We have to, you know? I mean, you know what I'm saying? Because, I mean, I'm from the same place they from, I understand them. So, we have to try to reach these kids, because too many of them dying, whites and blacks, so it don't matter about all that. So, like, the animosity, we all have to, we all have to put it down, and try to reach out to help these people. And if we say we are Christian, you know, uh, we, you know, we go, you know, biblical about the Bible, uh, you know, we need to practice this stuff and, and try to, you know, do what we can do, because, you know, if we, if we reach out to God and we do what we supposed to do, we'll be amazed at what can really happen. Things can really change, and we don't have to keep losing all these kids, man, you know? And that's, that's the, that's the, the main priority right here, because we losing too many kids, and that hurt in my heart, you know what I mean? That disgust me, you know? So, we have to do something. We have no choice. We have to do it, the community, so we need y'all to work with us too, not just the police. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Williams, um, P L Box fourteen forty-two, Covington, Georgia. I have a couple of concerns. Um, we know that Newton County is a small neck county. Whatever go on is gonna be repeated, it's gonna be said. So, my thing is, the word on the street is that Chairman Baines, you stronghold one of the constituents that was gonna apply for that position, and you told him that if he didn't withdraw, that you was gonna put information out about him, about some old charge that he was never convicted of. But I don't think that's right, because you, as the chairman, you brought, you picked the three candidates for the, um, county manager position. You picked them, and so, you picked the three people, and you didn't do a criminal background check on them to see what they had on their, on their past, on their history? You didn't do that? And now, you gonna tell the man that you gonna go to the media about Weston, his criminal background? But remember, you got dirty laundry right there too. You have went through this county, it was a man that wanted to bring a water park here. Familiar story, huh? You wanted thirty thousand dollars for him to bring his business to this county. And then, you wanted your broker to close the deal. You just had something came before the county not too long ago, where the man wanted to annex his property in to the city of Covington. You wanted thirty thousand dollars from that young man also. So, remember your dirty laundry that's out there too, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. I'm Sharon Collins, Fairview Estates. I just wanted to say, Commissioner Mason said something very important, that we may have done things one way, and it may not have been correct. And I believe the definition for insanity is doing the same thing expecting just different results. I was a part of the planning in two thousand nine for Fairview Estates. I've been in Fairview Estates for nineteen years, and I heard you all talk about what we should do, Sheriff, what we would do as a board, but before, they didn't bring us in in the beginning. And when we found out about it, then we came in and asked them to come to the table. So, um, I think I just said earlier that we had our yearly meeting, and believe it or not, in forty-five minutes, with the budget, we had to discuss it, all the other things, we were able to discuss the park, and the consensus of the park were for us, for Newton County to do, to have, to do some, make some changes. So, my thing is, were you all going to, are you thinking about just deciding what you want as a board, going to the sheriff, and then maybe talking with the, okay, thank you. I hope that doesn't happen, because when I tell you, if in two thousand and nine, if the community of Fairview could get together and make some consensus, and decide on having the park, that means that we amenable to the suggestion that you all have. But we see where we are now, and we don't want to make that same mistake again. So, the ideas that you may not, may have, may not work for us. We have a hundred and seventy-four investors, and we only have seventy-six homeowners. That had absolutely nothing to do with us, because in two thousand and eleven, when the park came, or the negotiation two thousand and nine, had to do with if we allowed the park to come, then the Board of Commissioners would foster us getting our HOA. So, I have the history, and all I want is a safe place for everyone. And we met last night with the homeowners, I heard some terrible things about that park, that we, we had no idea. Some homeless guy was putting up a tent and sleeping, we didn't know. And, and we've always been open to our community. Our HOA has at least four or five different activities for our community every year. And we have, uh, board members that have volunteer positions, that literally answer their phone all times of the night, and put it, put, uh, she puts it out on our Facebook page and our Fairview Estates page to alarm and, and let the, um, the, the residents of Fairview Estates know about different things that happen. So, we're doing everything we could possibly do, and we do have a, well, just put it like this, we have a very active, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Commissioner Edwards, and y'all, we do have a need for, um, executive session tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief. Um, uh, for those out there, we're having a, uh, there will be a rodeo coming to the Georgia FFA, FCLA Center, November twenty-second and twenty-third, I believe it'll be the first ever there, and gonna be put on by Professional Rodeo Bunch, so, looking forward to that. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner, um, Commissioner, um, Sanders.
I just want to say, I, I attended a great meeting today with our consultants. We had the opportunity to attend the HUD meeting for all the grantees of grants today, and I just wanted to share some information, because I've been contacted by organizations, want to know about this four million dollars, what Newton County is gonna do, and what's going on. So, I did go to a meeting today with our consultant that the board approved for me to work with them in regards to the grant, and we got directives from HUD. It was probably like fifteen hundred, uh, individuals across the United States that were awarded HUD grants, so it was exciting to see. So, one of the things they did say, and I wanted to put this out there, because there was information that was placed out there, we do, there is no hard deadline to turn in the grant information. We actually have until twenty thirty-one. And so, they said that they would like for us to have stuff in by December twenty twenty-three, but they will reach back out to those that don't have their items in September twenty twenty-five, and that's what I said at the beginning, they're not requiring all of your information to be put out there. They also stated, the environmental study does not have to be completed with sending back the application and an approval letter, and any changes of the scope of project, any changes to the grant, must be approved by Congress. The congressmembers who granted the award, the grant amount, and the statutory language is set by law. And I just want to make sure I put that information out there.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you for seeing. Um, I just, you know, I just want to make this kind of clear, because it seemed like it haven't been clear. Every time in District Three, when we talked about purchasing that property, I think it was six million? Am I sure? Yeah, Miss Muck's property? Well, okay, I supported it, and will continue to support it. But unfortunately, uh, I guess, for District Three is that you need three votes, and we just don't seem to have it at this point. But I will continue to support that, because I believe that those kids need somewhere to play out there. I support the one over in District Two. In fact, I don't know who named it in Dog's Park, in District Two. I supported the purchase of the property. I supported the purchase of the property, Nelson Heights. And just about every park in Newton County, I support it, because there's a, a great need. And I said all it, said this, we got to come together, people, for the, for the betterment of our communities. Thank you for seeing.
Commissioner Cowan. Thank you. Um, Mr. Shepherd left, but to address his, his questions, um, if I don't have anything, um, on my calendar, I would definitely come to the, um, to meeting. Um, if, if I have something on this particular meeting, on this particular Friday, um, we can schedule with my assistant, and I will definitely come the following Friday. But, no, I, I, no, I serve on boards, so I had to go to those meetings. You talking about with them? Oh, yeah, I, they can go, they can go along with me if they would like, it's two commissions can go. Um, but I would definitely get with my assistant and then let you, let you guys know, for sure. Um, but there are other foolishness that I won't even address. We do have a, a need for, um, executive session tonight, um, potential land acquisitions, if I'm not mistaken. I seek a motion that we adjourn this meeting and go into executive session. Huh? Um, I don't think it would be a vote, it won't be a vote. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? We stand in the executive session.